One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. Do I have a motion or any questions about approval of the minutes of the last meeting? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
We have work-study minutes and council minutes, correct? Okay, a second. Aye.
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 Have the approval of the work-study minutes as well.
Make a motion to approve the work-study minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Jenny, can you call the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Most motions have been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. Public comment, Mark.
I've received no request to speak tonight.
So A on the agenda is bid opening. Clearwell Banning Engineering.
Three bids. They were both received on time. Reload. Thank you. Acknowledged both addendums. And they have signed the bid form. Total base bid amount tonight, if that's one with you.
Again, thank you.
Total base bid amount, one million eight hundred twenty-three thousand.
Can you spell that company name for me? I'm sorry.
E R E. L O A D.
Thank you. Just as it sounds.
Second bid is from D N Tanks. They've acknowledged both addendums. They have signed the bid form. Total base bid amount, one million one hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred dollars.
President, staff would recommend that we allow our water superintendent, along with banning engineering, to review these bids and grant them authorization to respond for the lowest and most responsive bid.
Okay. Two bids, that's it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll need a vote on my recommendation, I'm sorry, of allowing them to award based on lowest, most responsive.
So do we need a vote right now?
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we make a motion to allow banning and the water superintendent Ellison to study those bids and then award that bid.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Jenny, call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt. Chris Gerald. David Winters.
Aye.
Pato.
Aye. Motion has been passed, five to zero. Thank you. B, Resolution nineteen twenty twenty-one, Fiscal Plan for Annexation, Public Hearing.
So last meeting, you approved Resolution nine twenty twenty-one, and there was inadvertently a one left off. It should have been nineteen twenty twenty-one. And so this is the same fiscal plan and resolution that you approved two weeks ago, and we've just corrected it with the proper number.
All right, do I have a motion to approve it?
No move.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jenny, call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald. David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. The motion's been passed, five to zero. Thank you. Ordinance seventeen.
While they're signing that, can you tell me who was the second bid you opened? D Tanks, was it? D N Tanks, thank you.
Okay, Mr. President, thank you.
C, Ordinance seventeen twenty twenty-one, Request for Rezone of Property, five sixty-nine North, CR three hundred East, Town Planner.
Lisa regrets that she can't be here tonight. I've asked Superintendent Lofton to kind of jump in on this. He'll be introducing the builder and let them make their presentation.
This came before your last meeting, and then you requested some changes be made. They have made those changes, and I don't know if you have the packet or the presentation that they, that I have here, but I think they have a presentation they're wanting to give. So it's up on the screen. They got it loaded up. There were changes made. I'll let them explain those changes. Some of those were per your request, and I think the staff is, gives a favorable recommendation, so.
Good evening. Tony Bagato, with Lennar Homes, and our address is one one five 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 North Meridian Street, Suite four hundred in Carmel, and it's four six zero three two. Thank you. Yeah, last time we were here, it was for the adoption of the fiscal plan, but we did discuss the planning side of the PUD, so I do want to still cover it briefly tonight. The project, as you know, is on the southeast corner of North County Road three hundred and one hundred north. Put the pointer towards you. That would help. Okay. So it is a rezone with the PUD as part of the annexation. We're going from AGR to PUD single-family. It's a total of one hundred and forty-one acres for a maximum of three hundred and twenty-three homes, so just around two point two nine units per acre. Within this area, there's a lot of open space and terrain we're trying to obviously maintain, and so there's forty-six point four open space, which is a significant amount, and also leads into why our site configuration and lot standards work out the way they do. This is shown in your comprehensive plan, is outside the future expansion area, but does call for suburban residential within the county's plan, which is a medium density, which we're in that range on the low end. And then you're also, your strategic plan talks about having high-end attractive homes, which we believe we're bringing into that market that we can show. This is the venture product. These are sixteen hundred square feet to a little over three thousand. Again, we feel these are attractive, high-quality homes. These start around the two sixty to three hundred range. This will be in the Area A portion of the development, more to the north. And here's some other views of the streetscape. So there's a lot of variety, definitely works, not having anti-monotony. And then our little bit larger homes, that'll be applied more to the south area, where you have the wooded area and the more natural ravine. This is our cornerstone, so these are on eighteen hundred to thirty-six hundred square feet, and these we anticipate to be three hundred and sixty thousand to four hundred thousand dollar price range. And here's that streetscape. As is discussed last time, and in the PUD, we are committing to no vinyl, so this will have hardy plank and some stone veneer wainscoting. There will be roof overhangs on all the homes. It'll have two-car garage, and if there's a three cars, we've committed to having an offset for that third car option. All the homes in the rear will have some kind of rear option in the whole community, which will include a raised wood deck, concrete patio, a screened-in porch, or a covered porch. In addition to this, and if you recall, last time, we talked about doing twenty-five percent of the homes facing the perimeter road would have an additional architectural feature beyond what we just talked about. But now we've, working with staff and those concerns from the Plan Commission, we went up to seventy-five percent, and then we're showing that the two homes on the corner specifically where that star is, two of those will be part of that seventy-five percent. So right at that corner, which is a focal part of the road, you'll definitely have enhanced architectural features on those two homes. Those features will include one of the, one or more of the following. It could be four-sided brick wrap, four-sided wainscot wrap brick, and then either a three-seasons room, morning room, and again, the corner lot. So that's in addition to what we're already offering on the rear facades within the entire community. Landscaping commitments, we did increase the buffer last time, and just for clarification, it was forty feet in the PUD, but it was drawn at thirty. Kensington was approved at forty feet in the PUD, but we've built it at fifty. So to line it all up, we're committing to fifty feet here, so that you have the same buffering distance between Kensington and this new community. And so Balmora, we now have a fifty-foot buffer, which was forty feet last time. We are committing again to front yard graded and sotted. Side yard will be graded and seeded. We have one shade tree, ornamental tree, and foundation plantings. And then we are committing to a tree conservation area, as well as a buffer area that came up through our discussions with the residents before the Plan Commission meeting. That buffer area is shown there, that kind of orange stripe around the one property. There was some concerns about our backyards being up close to those homeowners that lived there for fifteen years. So to be good neighbors, we committed to an increased setback and landscaping buffer there, as well as our perimeter landscaping. And then we heard some residents in Four Oaks that were concerned about how close we would get to the wooded area, and so we're maintaining a tree preservation area along there. There's some language in there that allows us to do work for utilities and road improvements, and then we'll replace any trees that may be needed if they're dead or dying. But otherwise, we'll maintain as many trees as possible. We moved that detention pond off the property line, which was a concern we heard at the Plan Commission. And then other commitments we're making, the HOA will maintain all common area lighting and street signs within the community. There will be a pool and pool house amenity area for this neighborhood, Balmora only. Kensington has its separate one. Connectivity, we're providing the perimeter paths consistent with the zoning standards and UDO. Then we're also talking to the water department. We're, outside of our development, we'll do our improvements within, but there's also potential for the city or the town to work with us if we have come to an agreement to do some water improvements from three hundred to two hundred, which will create a loop system. So that's beyond the scope of our project, but if we can work out an agreement with the town before we start construction, that's something we're willing to do. Traffic study was done as part of the project, and these were discussed last time, as well as the Plan Commission, so I wanted to highlight this a little more today. As part of the study, there was six intersections done in the view. So the County Road three hundred east, four hundred east, four twenty-five, four fifty, one hundred, and then Main Street, we're all looked at. As part of the study, they looked at the overall growth pattern of the town, which was calculated at one percent, as well as the nearby growth that was considered in the study was Kensington. And those roads there in yellow were the ones studied as part of this project for the direct impact of our proposal. In the study, it showed that during AM peak, you have sixty cars entering and one hundred and seventy-nine exiting. This is, you know, calculated at one peak time, where they'd expect the most amount of traffic for the homes. And the peak time calculates, you know, varies based on a very specific rate that the engineers use. It's called an I T E Trip Generation Manual, that they do thousands of studies, and we have a traffic engineer here to speak on that if you have more questions. But you have cars that vary, you know, if people leave for the gym in the morning before they go to work, or they take their children to school, not they're all, not all leaving the same time in the morning. But in the evening, you start to see a little bit more of a consistency of people coming around the same time. So we will have one hundred and ninety-nine trips entering around the evening peak time with one hundred and sixteen leaving. But even with that increased trips, it does show from our study that all the existing roads will continue to operate at the expected level they are today. And then we will make enhanced improvements to our entryways for XL and DCL lanes. And with those improvements, there will be no impact to the roadway. The changes since the last meeting, again, I want to just highlight, we increased our buffer to fifty feet, and we did increase the homes on the rear facade, have seventy-five percent of those homes additional features facing the roadway as the concerns that were addressed. And so in summary, we had a favorable recommendation from Plan Commission, based on the previous one, and now we've improved that plan. We have, you know, preserving the natural environment. We believe we're offering attractive, high-quality homes. Landscaping buffer and tree preservation for the adjacent residents that are there today. No impact from the traffic study. The fiscal impact, which was talked about last time, starting in twenty twenty-four, you would see six point six million net assessed value per year, if, once the project is building out. And that, half that would come to the town. So three point six million is what's anticipated to generate in value for the town, starting in twenty-four. And then, as Barry said, we've had staff support and worked closely with Matt, Lisa, and Barry, and asking for your support.
Any comments?
Thank you for going back and working further with the staff. Appreciate that.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve ordinance number seventeen twenty twenty-one.
Have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jenny, take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Nay.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed, four to one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Next is Ordinance twenty-two twenty twenty-one, Request for Annexation, Mark.
Before you tonight is Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one. It's a request for annexation of two point nine three acres. And what this was, was an oversight on the original annexation, where additional property became available to the builder. This actually was introduced on July seventh, had a public hearing on July twenty-first, and is up for adoption tonight. Again, it's just, it's a part of this overall project that wasn't in the initial annexation, and we felt to be transparent and clean that it was in our best interest to introduce it as its own annexation ordinance.
Any comment from the council?
How did it come to be available?
The property owner.
Okay.
Yeah. Originally, it wasn't there, and the property owner made it there.
Does their current plan include building on that land?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It's part of the overall project, I guess. I don't know if they're actually gonna build. Yeah, I don't know if they're actually gonna build on that acreage, but it's part of their project.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty twenty-one for annexation.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Thank you. Motion's been passed. Thank you. Ordinance twenty-three twenty-one, Request for Annexation, twenty-one oh four east Main Street, Mark.
I'm gonna wait a minute, Mr. President, until we can get that signed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mark.
So Ordinance twenty-three twenty twenty-one is up for a public hearing tonight. It's an annexation of a single-family residence located at twenty-one zero four east Main Street. I apologize, I don't know the petitioners. Are they here tonight?
They are?
Okay, great. Would you like to have them speak, or, this is a pretty straightforward annexation, to be honest with you, on a single family, but it was introduced, and now it's up for public hearing. So we will need to gavel the regular meeting closed, open the public hearing, take comments, and go from there.
I gavel the meeting open. Take any comments on this? No comments? Gavel the meeting closed.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ordinance twenty-four twenty-one, Amended to Cell Phone Allowance, Clerk Treasurer.
This is to amend the cell phone allowance to allow for the new building inspector position that we just hired for.
Any comments?
You can suspend the rules if you choose, but we don't have any real, there's no urgency on this.
We'll let it take its course.
Sounds great.
Capital Expenditure Request, Accounting Software, Clerk Treasurer.
The state of Indiana is requiring that every city and town within the state go to four-digit fund numbers. And in order to do this, we are going to have to upgrade our accounting software, and there's going to be configurations, of course, and training that's going to need to take place. This is an invoice to allow the upgrades and the changes in the fund number and for training staff and the software implementation. So I'm requesting approval this evening so that we can do this. I will be splitting it between the utilities and the host technology fund. There's sufficient, there's not sufficient funds in the host technology fund, but there are within the host fund where we can transfer within technology.
Do you know what the split would be coming from host versus the other fund?
Thirteen thousand, because we take ten percent out of stormwater, and then we divide the rest between water, wastewater, and...
Did Tyler Technologies used to be known by a different name or something?
Their name is Tyler Technology In Code, so you'll hear them be referred to as both. But as long as I've known and worked with them, it's been Tyler Technology In Code.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the capital expenditure request for accounting software and training.
Second.
Motion in a second. Jenny, take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion has been passed, five to zero. Thank you. Do I have anything to sign, Jim? We don't have anything to sign, okay. H, Capital Expenditure Request, New Vehicle, Stormwater Superintendent, Barry.
I come before you tonight to request a vehicle purchase. To give you a little back history, of course, you already know I've got a new employee. Yay. Really excited about it. He's doing a good job, by the way, so I really appreciate his effort. He's been really helping on the building, doing a lot of plumbing repairs and things like that. But this vehicle came available because the police department had ordered trucks, and one of them didn't have what's called a RAM box, storage boxes on the side, so they sent that back. Asked a couple of questions, and the price on the vehicle, obviously, you know, is twenty-nine thousand and some change. But it became apparent to me that whenever he's out in the field, it's still gonna require me to be out some. So the need is gonna be that, you know, the way we're growing, I'm definitely gonna have to have another vehicle, so that's why I'm here. We're kind of busy, and if he's out, and I take the vehicle home, and then I come back here, he's out, I'm stranded here. So it doesn't leave me a chance to get out and do other inspections, which is gonna be required. Right now, he's doing building inspections, I'm doing development, and then right-of-way stuff in town, so that's the need.
What if we got you a bicycle?
Is it motor?
Madison has a scooter you can borrow.
That sounds kind of interesting. I don't know, maybe I'll do that. Except in the winter.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
Sorry, I felt like I was about to start choking there. I was looking at this one, and I know we got another vehicle request here at the end. And this may have been asked and answered before, so forgive me if this is a repeat. We're buying vehicles from Eastgate Chrysler, and there's probably two dozen dealerships between here and there, including a Chrysler dealership in Plainfield, part of Hendricks County. Why do we go all the way to the east side of town?
So for me, it was just availability of a vehicle that was readily available. These type of fleet vehicles are very hard to get, because they're really special orders. They don't have a lot of features. They're really plain Jane models. This one doesn't even have a console. So it was really a convenience factor. The vehicle was already there, and the price is really good, honestly. So it's convenience for me. I can't speak on the police department's behalf, but for me, it was the availability of the vehicle.
I would think if we're gonna, I just, I always hear buy local and support the community. We don't have a dealership in Danville, but, you know, they're in the area, in Hendricks County. I assume that there's a reason, if we're getting a good deal over there, is what's the connection to that dealership that gets us that good deal?
I honestly don't know. I know that we've purchased vehicles from the, I believe it's the manager of this, of Eastgate. I believe we've purchased vehicles from him before, when he was at Westgate in Plainfield. And he moved to Eastgate to take the general manager position, so that's probably the connection.
Okay. What's his name?
Shawn Roberts.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve Barry's capital expenditure request for a new vehicle.
I second it.
Motion in a second. Jenny, take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been approved, five to seven, or five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We added a few people there. We got more houses coming.
I was gonna say, that didn't sound like a victory, five to seven, but I'll take it.
Don't laugh. Pretty soon, we are gonna have seven of us up here. Do we have anything to sign? Okay, Capital Expenditure Request for Matching Funds for Community Crossing Grant for Paving, Mr. Public, Andrew Works.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm bringing to you this capital expenditure request to match the funds that we were awarded through the Community Crossing Grant. We're at twenty-five percent in matching. That total is fourteen nine eleven. Since the project was under one hundred and fifty thousand, we went out and got estimates, quotes, instead of going through the bid process, since it was underneath that one hundred and fifty thousand mark. I didn't include the quotes in the packet, so Baumgartner was the lowest with fifty-nine six forty-four. So we're just picking up the twenty-five percent of that match that we were awarded. We applied for a whole lot more, but we only received the one street heritage drive. So that's the one we're gonna be owing to, two million overlay, so that's what this capital expenditure request is for, is just that twenty-five percent match.
If I may, he did include estimates in a previous email, and then we had an issue with the... And then we had an issue with the capital expenditure reform. And so when that happened, I inadvertently did not put his estimates in the packets. So...
And I can give those to you if you would like. Like I said, Baumgartner was fifty-nine-six-forty-four. Haskell was another one that responded there at ninety-three thousand. And then Reith Riley responded there at eighty-eight-eight.
Congratulations on getting that grant.
Absolutely.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital expenditure request for a twenty-five percent match to the Community Crossings grant.
Second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Jenny, can you take the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition to that, I did want to bring this to the entire council. The president does understand, does know this. But we applied for another Community Crossing Grant, the second one of the year. Last week, we applied for nine-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars worth of work. I was not able to bring that to everybody ahead of time, but I didn't make the president aware and town manager, and we did get that signed. But I'm hoping that we can move forward with that. It's about two-twenty-six is what our match will be currently at the twenty-five percent range. So I'm hoping we can get some streets redone in this town. But I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, that we did apply for another grant, and hopefully we can get that one.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Hi, capital expenditure request, matching funds for Community Crossing Grant for paving. Did we do that already? We did that already. Yeah, sorry. Jay, capital expenditure request, awning on Bostic Gym.
So I've been working on this project for a while now. I drew the short straw. Barry, Barry and I have been working on this project for a while. You've seen what it looks like outside. We had a couple contractors, and they just didn't meet our standards. And we had some contract issues. Trying to get estimates right now in this market was really hard. And so we finally, we got what we needed. We met Barry's standards, and we finally got a quote estimate. With that, too, the expenditure request, if you look at it, it's coming from a bunch of different places. It was wood before. So our insurance quote only was to put it back in wood. We didn't want it in wood. We wanted it to be forever. Aluminum structure with gutters and really a nice signature piece. We're also going to paint the doors, but that's a park thing anyways. So we have some money coming from host that we encumbered. And then Barry is helping out with a little bit with the building fund. And then that general is actually an insurance check that we received from the damage from it. So spread out three ways to get the magic to happen. We also, on a side note, the windows should be coming in and doors. The double doors will be fixed, I think, this weekend, actually. And then the windows and stuff are supposed to come in at the end of the month. So we're making things happen, finally.
Well, that's good. So, any comments?
I had a quick question. I mean, it says host, and it says general. Do we really have a fund named Barry Fund?
Well, I had to get it in in time, and I couldn't find Barry. I actually do have the fund numbers.
I just thought it was amusing, sorry.
He sent me a text with the fund numbers, but it was too late.
So the fund number's correct, but the name is Barry.
Yeah, it's just Barry's Building Funds. And then the general's actually insurance check, but that is in the general fund. So I couldn't... There wasn't enough room to put that in there.
Barry's our benevolent funder.
He's paying for it in cash himself.
It was named after me, by the way.
Thought you liked to fly under the radar that way. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Motion, I make a motion that we approve the capital expense request for the awning for Boston Gym.
I second that.
Motion is second. Jenny, take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you. Okay, capital expenditure request for roundabout signs for wayfinding assistant town manager.
So this is another project that's probably, I would say, almost about two years in the making. The DDP, we had, one of the projects was to kind of increase bringing people downtown. And one of the biggest areas was around the roundabout. You got Walmart there, you have the fairgrounds, and a lot of people don't actually go west of that. How can we get them downtown? So one of our projects was fixing the banner holders, which we've done that, we're waiting on permits. This was another project. When Walmart came in, they, they had some dollars dedicated towards fixing the area trails, some infrastructure items, and this was one of the items that was on there, too. And it's wayfinding, pretty much. So let me throw this up here so you can see. The planning commission did catch one error in there, is they put Parks and Rec on the sign. And there won't be Parks and Rec on the sign, it'll be Town of Danville. But this was the signature in there. A big trend with roundabouts is there's a lot of issues with people not seeing them until you're in there, because ours is really flat. You'll see Avon and the other places, they built them up. And the reason is, is because of the line of sight. It makes you, when there's nothing there, you know, roads are supposed to be straight. It makes you want to drive right through it. So part of that was, we need to do something with that space. And this was one of the items, was to put a signature piece in there for wayfinding. And then also, not only this, that was the safety sign, pretty much. And then to add these signs around it so that people can know where some of the hotspots are around town. Bring them downtown, send them to Beasley's, you know, all those different places. And then this would continue eventually over time through the town, where we'd, you know, put the edges of town, we want to have them come in. And then also, you know, even downtown, I know DDP was talking about some directional signage down there. Keeping them kind of broad to where they say, like, you know, park, fairgrounds, hospital, you know, just real general talking there, just in case anything would change its name or whatever. But just showing them where places that they may have interest in when they come in there. And this would be funded through the Walmart, Walmart Fund, Tiff Fund, from Walmart. And then also, along with that, in the future, you'll have an infrastructure item coming. I think there's a turn lane.
There's two, a, two, three paving projects, a stormwater project. And then once everything's finalized, we'll be coming back to you with a trail project.
So kind of sprucing up that whole area and using it, you know, to, to bring people downtown, you know? Kind of a commerce thing. And then also, with the wayfinding, you know, pushing our brand in other places. So now they'll know they're in Danville, you know, when they're there.
Will, what year did you put the signs for wayfinding down at the park?
That was probably four years ago or five years ago.
The design of those was probably, what, six years before that?
I think even before that, it was like seven or eight.
Because I sat on that committee.
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm just, I'm just excited. I'm super excited to see, you know, some of the work that we had done, you know, over a decade ago, finally be put to work in, in that vision, you know? And I mean, some of us sitting up here and even in the audience never saw that work, you know, didn't know, you know, the hours, you know, that we spent on, on wayfinding signs. And, yeah. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm just super stoked that, that we're, we're still using that stuff. So it looked great then, and it looks great now, so.
To continue to do that, but we're doing little pieces at a time, you know, what we can afford.
Well, the whole thing was, we didn't have a funding mechanism back in the day. So, yeah, excellent.
Probably our, our borders will be next to add, you know, those signs on, so.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the capital expenditure for a roundabout sign for wayfinding.
Second.
Motion is second. Jenny, take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. The motion's been passed five to zero. Thank you. No signing? Okay. Capital expenditure request, new vehicle. Police chief will present a request.
Mr. President, we've got a last-minute substitution. Josh Butler's going to present.
This is the substitute for the police chief?
Yes, sir.
We're getting high-quality substitutes now.
This might be an upgrade.
My department's trying to replace a...
Wait a second, are you worried about us?
What's that?
Grenades and whatever else.
You can put it on if you want.
I didn't know we were that fearsome.
Yeah. My department's trying to replace a Dodge Ram two thousand and fifteen for the total cost of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That includes a fifteen thousand dollar trade-in credit for the truck. It's high mileage and high hours, as an old K-9 truck, so it's, it's beat up. The new truck was twenty-nine thousand even. They're asking one thousand, two hundred and eighty to wrap the vehicle, nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars to equip it, for lights, computers, and everything. And like I said, total cost of twenty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine.
Any comments?
This will be paid from the bond proceeds.
Seems pretty reasonable, the price.
The trade-in, the trade-in value is, like, the market's good right now for trade-ins.
Yeah, that looks, yeah, great.
Hey, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital expenditure request for a new police vehicle.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye. Motion's been passed five to zero. Enjoy your truck.
Don't need that paperwork.
Hey. Aim Dockets?
Want to do around the horn?
We're gonna do around the horn. There you go. I don't care, Mark.
Way, you know that. Stormwater Department, seven new single-family homes were issued for the month of July. Repairs are being in on sinkholes that have appeared recently. High Street, they've been working on some stormwater improvements. The concrete walls have been going up, the new jail. Camden Creek's finished paving. They will be ready to pull building permits soon. Northwood Haven is moving quickly and will be looking to make connection to town utilities. Kensington Sections Two and Three are moving along with stormwater infrastructure nearing completion. The alleys from Wayne Street to Indiana Street have had a fresh coat of asphalt from the gas main repairs. And he's working on boiler room repairs to start probably late this month and continue into September. Water Department, finished up reading meetings, had a Hillcrest water meter valve replacement. The water was shut off for a brief time, or it will be off for a brief time. Two valve box repairs in Barry Knoll and Old Farm. They're going to do some meter route maintenance, basically weed eating, brush, you know, getting cleaned up some of the brush and stuff. And then the South Jefferson Street laundry mat meter bolt was updated and repaired, or will be. And wastewater will be assisting with the back truck on that. Fire Department had thirty-six runs last week. They're at one thousand, one hundred and forty-six runs for the year, which is up two-hundred-and-fifteen from last year. They're starting to see an increase in sick person and mental emotional runs. They've been doing some training with some dive classes, open water training. They've been working with the high schools athletic trainers as we start getting into athletic season. They have an opportunity to work with the trainers, so the trainers know what they need. And the, the fire department knows what, how the trainers are going to be working with them, so. And then they've been doing some hose drills in Ellis Park. Public Works, they've been pouring final concrete on the square alley. It should be reopened normal traffic tomorrow. Working on drawings for sidewalk for the cross street to assist in obtaining NDOT permit. They were replacing broken curbing in multiple locations. They hope to begin preparing Lincoln Street for a sidewalk installation, not the whole, not the whole street. Little, little pieces at a time, sorry. Again, he was here with your, the capital expenditure request. They've been catching up on some urgent pothole repairing. They participated in National Night Out. Continuing to raise tree canopies as time allows. They do, did an install of a little library at one fifteen South Jefferson, and he discussed the Community Crossing Grants with you. Parks Department, he's setting a memorial bench. He's prepping the pool for closing and planning for twenty-twenty-two programs. He's in a hiring process for maintenance and a part-time rec coordinator. He's been working on Aiken Park's landscaping and the monument landscaping. LED lighting to be added to the Hargrave Hall. He's, I think the traffic committee meets tomorrow. He's working on the fountain. I applaud his efforts. I don't know.
I think we determined up here just a moment ago that that's going to become a splash pad.
I, I, I think that's wonderful, yeah. Yeah, he does have some ideas. None of them are consistent with mine. He's been assisting with the hiring of an office manager to replace Malin. Madison is continuing to interview leadership team members. She's putting together plug-in flyers. She worked with National Night Out. I think she's getting more comfortable in her position. August post videos, she's all-town meetings, National Night Out, first day of school, pool closing, July highlights, August programs, and DPW updates. So I got a lot of positive comments about Madison's work for the pre-event advertising for last night. Everybody said that they knew about it because she'd been doing such a great job of advertising.
So it was useful to get her.
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Mark. Sorry, I questioned your authority there.
The wastewater department was working on lift station checks. They assisted DPW in pouring concrete, assisted the water department, setting new service with the VAC truck, rotating clarifiers to control algae growth. They've been mowing their lots. They have been doing a chemical flush through the system assembly, running the belt filter press, and a final test for the DMRQA forty-one study. You'll have to ask Tony about what that is, because I have no clue. So... As for me, I've got a couple of things. I'm seeking consensus tonight. Most of you know Rhonda Beck. She's the one that helps produce the military banners that we have around the square. The program's been extremely popular, and they're already getting requests for next year. So I'm seeking consensus from the council if you want to continue working with Mrs. Beck and, and keep rolling out this program. Everybody's good? Okay, thank you.
We have consensus.
All right. Is the council interested? I know we've passed ordinances for golf carts. We've passed them for off-road vehicles. And Jewel, I, I know you weren't at the last board of directors meeting, but one of the issues that came up were, and I don't know how else to call them, they called them scooters, but it was the electric wheelchairs, essentially, that people, they're not actually covered by anything. Do. So is this something you feel that we should pass an ordinance to cover this, or? You knew I was going to call on you sometime tonight. Wasn't going to happen. We need a new microphone, sorry.
So generally speaking, the wheelchair should be on the sidewalks if available. That's why you have the ADA requirements and the width that is supposed to be there. I think it's extraordinarily dangerous to have them on the roadways. And so i-if you're saying an ordinance to say that they're prohibited from that, then...
I haven't read it completely. It came through AIM. Leslie sent it out right after the board of directors meeting.
It's something that we all research and give an opinion.
Thank you.
To you on, but you want to keep them on the sidewalk.
Thank you. As a reminder, I sent out an email to everyone. Tomorrow, the AIM Ideas Summit opens up. So if you are interested in attending, I need to know. As Jenny pointed out, October sixth, we have a council meeting scheduled, and it is a pre-adoption hearing, so we do have to have the meeting, obviously, so. But if you want to go down and spend a day and come back, or whatever you want to do, or... Will had brought up the possibility of, of doing some virtual, but...
Built in the requirement of having a quorum here.
Right.
For those virtuals as well, so.
Right.
You'll want to make sure that you have that.
Right. So again, if you can email me by tomorrow morning, that'd be great, so I can make those registrations for anybody who intends to go. Lastly, if you've not received correspondence from AIM, they have a special webinar for council members on August 17th. So if you're interested in attending, let me know, we can get you signed up for it. I think it has some budget modules in it as well, Jenny. I'm not real sure, but like I said, it was designed for council members, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Jenny?
Will, were you engaged with Civic Plus in anything website related?
That's, that's the website we're looking to move towards. We're going to start on that project, I think, next month, and then bring you some numbers. We, we sat down and went over and reviewed what they have. There's also an idea of a, what do they call it? Capstone through the county? Something like a capstone through the county where everybody would be able to be on the same one and refer to each, each other. It's a good idea, and we are going to look into it pretty heavy.
Okay. Well, because I had met with the leadership Hendricks County, the team that's running with that, so I have some data that I'll, I'll get with you afterwards, but I just want to let the council know that I had met with them and seemed pretty, pretty interesting on what they wanted to do. And with Madison joining us, welcome Madison, as a way for us to be more transparent and get more information out there, I thought it was a good idea to, to engage them, you know, in that conversation. Also, just a quick question. I saw that there was some gravel that went down at the end of Marion Street and Wayne. I didn't know if anybody knew what was going on over there.
Apparently all the utilities know what's going on.
Filling that end to a degree, we spent a lot of time and effort. That pipe that comes off of Marion goes straight down, that's actually right away. The road was intended at some point to go down that avenue.
All the way down, yep.
So earlier this year, we, we put a new pipe in, and it all washed out. Just a lot of water coming through there. We did everything we could. We used pretty much every tool we have, but it did wash out. And Justin Dorsey owns that property, so on his property, he's wanting to build that up. Eventually wants to try to develop it, so he's bringing in dirt back there. That's what that is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, nothing further.
I thought last night was really good. For everyone who had a part in making it happen, congratulations on a successful night. Next year, I know will be even better. And definitely seeing the impact of having Madison on board, so thank you for your work so far. And I know we're just going to keep getting better and better as time goes on, so great job.
I just have a silly question. Why is National Night Out just called National Night Out and not National Night Out Against Crime?
Yeah, we don't.
I think they left.
Yeah, they, they left. I don't know the answer to that. We also thought about maybe making it more of like police and fire, more, more oriented to all, you know, emergency services. Because if we're going to put this much effort into it, we need to celebrate, you know, both, both sides of that spectrum.
Okay.
We talked about maybe even doing our own thing, but still keeping it the same date and the same stuff, but I don't know. That, we're having a wrap-up meeting on Monday, and so if you guys have any feedback of things that you want to change, or you loved, or hated, feel free to shoot me an email, because we're going to go through that.
Okay. One more thing. If, you want to see the mural that's in the works by our award-winning art teacher, Katie Porcho, from the school system? Just like if you're in front of, for some reason, you'd be in front of Red Stonuts, I don't know why, you would be there. But if you just walk south and turn the corner, it's right there on that big brick wall of that building. So, check it out. It's, it looks like a postcard. It's going to be really cool. That's all, Mr. President.
I've got a, just a quick comment in regards to the rezone of the Lenar development. I'm sure it's going to be a nice development. It looks great on paper. But my opinion is, I feel like the town is overcommitting on PUDs, and hopefully we're not going to under-deliver. So I know we're a team, we're going to work together, but that's just my opinion. On a positive note, last night was a very much success. A lot of people here, that was a great job. So whoever, I don't know who was involved with putting that on, great job. So, and like David said, it'll just keep getting better, so.
Do you have anything?
Ditto.
All right, well, I agree, last night was a good thing. And welcome aboard, Madison, you're doing a good job. I have one thing to report. We hear we have a fire truck with a single person that drives down the city streets and stops in front of people's houses and pulls his fire extinguisher out and puts out the fire. So what happened, Rob? You were going down the street and you, you came across a fire?
Well, he's making his way up. I also heard he saved a puppy and rescued a kid from a tree as well. But that could just be false.
As well?
A puppy. I heard a puppy.
On CNN.
That was on CNN.
Also.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, this afternoon, I was going to leave work a little early for the council meeting tonight.
Really?
Yeah. And that, that didn't work out for me, so. And so I was heading home, and I was on North Washington Street, and I noticed some smoke. Looked down an alley and noticed a fence on fire and the side of the house smoking. So I dispatched the fire department and used the fire extinguisher in my vehicle to put it out. And also, their water bill may be up a little high, because I used their water to help extinguish the fire, and the fire.
Resourceful, I like it, I like it.
Yeah. So the fire department came in behind me and, and put the fire out. So it was lucky, the guy was cleaning up his yard and made a mistake and put some hot, or some embers in a trash can along his fence, and the trash can caught fire, and the radiant heat went up the side of his house and was catching the house on fire. So, all good.
Are you going to require a separate fire station for you now?
Yeah, it's called headquarters, so.
Maybe you go back to the old one there.
Yeah.
Sit there and wait.
Yeah.
Take your fire extinguisher from you?
They wanted to, but I put another one in there, so.
Well, thank you for that.
Yep.
Thanks, Rob.
Claim dockets?
Move to approve the claim docket.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Y'all agree?
Yep, aye.